To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of Bowling Green City Council. We're pleased that you're here tonight. Kay, would you please begin by calling the roll?
Osbacher.
Here.
Gordon.
Here.
Jeffers.
Here.
McComber.
Roland.
Here.
Seliger.
Here.
Zaffordino.
Here. The minutes from the meeting that was held on August 21st, 2017, were presented to council prior to this meeting. Are there any adjustments or additions to these minutes? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
It's moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion passes. The minutes are approved as presented. Kay, do we have correspondence this evening?
Yes, distributed to you prior to the meeting were the budget transfers to be made for the month of September, and those require your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the budget transfers?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion passes. The budget transfers are approved as presented.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Kay. At this point, I'd like to ask Mayor Edwards to help us with a special presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, members of council and all assembled. I'm pleased to call to the podium this evening the Chair of our, I should say, the outstanding Chair of our Human Relations Commission, Reverend Mary Jane Saunders, who has a special presentation to make. And I think, Mary Jane, you'll have some others involved in this process, right?
Need any of my, your notes?
I don't think so. Members of council, mayor, good evening. It is a pleasure to be here tonight representing the Human Relations Commission. As many of you will recall, it was back in April that we brought a resolution to city council to, about Bowling Green being a welcoming community for immigrants. And after some discussion, that resolution was passed, and we think we were very excited about that. It's a good statement for our community to make. Well, we also got an idea. We had been working in conjunction with La Conexión on that, and it was actually Beatrice Majah who came up with the idea. She said, wouldn't it be cool if we got the resolution translated into a variety of different languages by people who live, who are, you know, citizens of Bowling, members of the Bowling Green community? So, we got that going, Beatrice got that going, and then we thought, Beatrice said, wouldn't it be cool to have a poster? So, we did that, and I called on a good friend, Dr. Ethan Jordan, who is at the university, a teacher there, and he designed this poster for us. So, we would like to present this to the city. So, I'm going to call Beatrice, and then if you could introduce the people who are going to come, and they're just going to read a line in the various languages of the resolution. And this is the design that Ethan came up with, and you probably recognize the shape, right? But this is Ethan, Ethan, the designer. Thank you.
Thank you, and I want to thank, particularly, actually, the idea of the poster came from Mariela Tsuki, who is here somewhere. Ah, that's Mariela Tsuki. And I want to thank Ethan Jordan for the design. It really, I think, expresses the spirit of the resolution, and what it means to welcome immigrants, to welcome diversity, multiculturalism, and multilingualism, right? So, we have here some of the translators. This is a work in progress, and we want to make this open to the community, to, and hopefully to have that available in the city website. And for anybody in the community who wish to translate this to their own language, I think we should, it would be a good idea to have that, to keep that open, right, for many other people to keep translating this. So, what we're going to do is just to read the first resolve in different, different languages, and then I'm going to let everyone to introduce themselves. So, do you want to start with the English, just the first resolve?
Sure. That the city of Bowling Green proclaims itself to be a welcoming and safe community for immigrants, and condemns any discrimination, harassment, or unjustified deportation of immigrant residents of Bowling Green.
And this in Vietnamese. Thank for Bowling Green. Time 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 for Bowling Green.
I'm going to read in Telugu, which is an Indian language from the southern part of India. Bowling Green Nagaranaki, balasavachina varini. Swagatam palakistu, balasavachina nivastitulapai, vevakshata vedhim pulaleka, asamarthiina maina, bahishkaraalu, tivranga khandistunadi, i nagar palakasamshta.
I will be reading the resolution in Hindi, which is a language in North India, and also one of the official languages in India. Bowling Green, Bowling Green Ke Shahar, sab aapka vasiyon aur nevasiyon ke liye ek swagat, surakshit aur samaveshi shahar banana chahte hain.
I'm going to read in German. Paragraph 1. The Stadt Bowling Green beken sich dazu als sichere Gemeinschaft für Zuwanderer zu gelten und sie willkommen zu heißen. Sie verurteilt jegliche Diskriminierung, die Belästigung und ungerechtfertigte Ausweisung von Zuwanderern.
I'm going to read it in Chinese. Bowling Green Shu, shaming, benshi, jaoi, yiming, tigo, yohha, anchen, da, shu, chuan, jing, chen ze, yi che, qishis, saorao, iji, bu gong, de, chu, zhu, benshi, shi ming, de, xin wei.
And I'll be reading in Italian. Che la città di Bowling Green si auto proclama quale comunità accogliente e sicura per gli immigrati, e condanna ogni discriminazione, molestia o deportazione injustificata di residenti immigrati a Bowling Green.
And in Spanish, section 1. Que la ciudad de Bowling Green se proclama como comunidad acogedora y segura para inmigrantes, y condena cualquier discriminación, hostigamiento, o deportación injustificada de inmigrantes residentes en Bowling Green. So finally, would you like to say your names?
Mariela Tsuki, Ming.
My name's John Ronan.
Christina Gunther.
Shredivas Malcote.
Maludica Malcote.
And my name is Hailey.
And Ethan Jordan.
And I also want to recognize the translation to Arabic, was made by Adnan Charefi, who could not be here today. Thank you.
Thank you all, very, very much. I'll pass this down, so members of council can just, thank you very much. Thank you, one and all. You're welcome to stay on for the remainder of council meetings.
We understand if you leave. At this point, we move on our agenda to lobby visitation, and we welcome anyone in the audience who is interested in speaking to council to do so at this time. Our process is that we ask those that are interested in speaking to sign up with our clerk prior to the meeting. So, Kay, who do we have on the board this evening?
First person is Prudence Bratt.
Thank you. Prudy, we ask that you approach the microphone and please just state your name and address for the record.
I got it right here. All right.
Okay, first of all, my name is Prudence Bratt, 220 Maker Street. I'm the owner of Sunset Bistro here in Bowling Green, and I'm here a little, to learn a little bit more about what's going on with the liquor license that some people are kind of hoping can come into Bowling Green, and to tell people a little bit of my experience with getting a liquor license. Sunset Bistro has only been open a little over two years, and getting a liquor license was not only frustrating and tongue-consuming, but it's very, very expensive, and I'll be paying on it for years. Tens of thousands of dollars to buy a liquor license, and it was a difficult process to go through. So, when I first wanted to open a nice restaurant here in Bowling Green and offer something on the west side of town, I had a lot of people, particularly from the west side of town, we hope you have a liquor license. You know, I like to have one beer with dinner, or, you know, hopefully you'll have wine and that sort of thing. The idea was to put a patio out back, which I've also done, and people like to sit outside and maybe have a couple drinks and have dinner. So, I decided to get into the process of looking for a liquor license. I asked a lot of attorneys in town. I eventually went to Brad Connor, who at the time was chief of police, and I said, what do I do? Everyone's telling me that there's not one available. So, he gave me a lecture on patience, and kind of explained our unique situation here in Bowling Green. There were a number of liquor license, and this is how I understand it, there were a number of liquor licenses available in Bowling Green. Some of them were not getting used at the time, but they could be, quote, "hidden" as an investment tool for some people. So, he said I would have to wait until one of those came available to me. What's supposed to happen if someone isn't using their liquor license, they give it back to the state, and then, because it's always the states, it's their property. So, you basically lease it from them to have the rights to sell alcohol out of your establishment. And what happened is, like I said, some people were holding on to those, and so my only shot in the dark here in Bowling Green was to hope that somebody would want to sell me their usage of the liquor license. So, as I was trying to understand, I was in Colorado for 10 years, so the laws are very different, so I was learning everything as we went, and I finally got a call from an attorney here in town who said, there's a liquor license available. You buy it blind, you don't know who you're buying it from, there are three investors who hold this liquor license, and it's going to cost you $50,000. But we can get it for you, and it's going to take months and months for you to actually be able to put that liquor license into use. So, after careful consideration, my family and I decided to go ahead and purchase the liquor license. Me not understanding it, it sounded so shady that I even called Brad Connor back and said, are you going to arrest me if I do this? Even though I had three attorneys on it. My attorney, someone specifically out of Columbus, who was a liquor license attorney, and then a third-party attorney as well. So, I end up purchasing this liquor license later to find out where it had been used, and who had owned it, who the investors were. So, I am now paying a large monthly amount to these people, and I will own, or I will owe a huge balloon payment at the end of five years with the interest included on that in order to have this liquor license, to be able to give someone a responsible place to drink on the west side of town. It was a little bit different, and that's how I understood was the only way for me to do this, because they didn't give it back to the state for me to lease it, which, by the way, I still pay all the leasing fees, as if they had given it back to the state and I was just using it from the state. So, it's a long and complicated story, but at the end of the day, I decided to put the money into this, knowing that it was a good investment, and that it wouldn't lose its value. And from what I understand with this other license coming in from another county, which, by the way, I had asked if I could do, and was told I would be shut down if I ever even thought about trying to do it. So, in Bowling Green, Prudy, we will shut you down in a minute if you try to do this, because apparently that had happened just a couple years earlier, the place, and I, the name is escaping me, that was out by Kroger that is now Goheo's. The people that owned it before brought one in from another county, and it was a problem then, and so I was told if I tried to do something similar to what they had done, I would be shut down. Again, so, okay, I'll spend the money to be able to have my dream. So, I understand with this situation coming forward with the pizza place out on the south side of town, I'm not against them having a liquor license whatsoever. I am not against another restaurant in town, but I need to make sure that my money, that I'm working 88 hours a week right now, my money that I'm trying to make to pay off this liquor license, that that, that my investment is worth it, and that it stays of true value. The only reason I chose to do this is because I was assured by many, many, many people here in town, and who also have businesses that involve liquor license here in Bowling Green. It's not going to lose value. You know, if something happens, if you have to close down, if you get sick, if you, if anything happens, you'll always have that value in your liquor license, and right now I feel like that's a little bit threatened. You know, and of course, I work in a restaurant, so you hear a lot of things through all your days there, and a lot of people are saying, you know, if this happens, it's going to become a more regular thing, which makes me nervous, because my family has put a lot on the line. Granted, I didn't put a half a million dollars into a building because I didn't have it, but I put everything I had into my space. My family put a lot on the line to have anything devalue this liquor license is making me nervous. So, I came here both for education, for myself, because I don't know everything that's going on with this liquor license, but I also came to explain about a girl with a dream out on the west side of town who ended up, I mean, I'll pay on it for decades, tens of thousands of dollars for a really long time, not to mention, you know, the regular things that you kind of put at stake when you have a liquor license anyway. So, I think that we've handled our liquor license both responsibly, you know, I pay my payments on time, I do all that stuff, but to have someone be able to bring one in just seems a little bit backwards, when two years ago I was told I'd be shut down if the, if I tried to make that available to me. So, that's why I'm here. I had half the room say, Prudy, what are you doing here? And it's, it's more to get some more information, because this makes me a little bit nervous, quite honestly. So, I don't know.
Thank you, Prudy. We do appreciate you coming this evening, and certainly appreciate your investment in Bowling Green. Speaking from personal perspective, we eat at your restaurant, we love it, and we're really thrilled that you're there on the west side of town.
Thank you.
I think that perhaps maybe the best way for us to provide you the educational component that you're looking for, maybe we could get together after the meeting with Joe Fosser, Lori Treter, then they would be able to, I think, maybe answer your questions a little better than I can in this public forum. And certainly, I can't speak to, you know, how this, you know, if this transfer were approved, I can't speak, you know, how this may or may not affect your investment in your restaurant, but I would point out that we are being told that the folks that are attempting to make this transfer, which, you know, first of all, is, is legal, they have significant expenditures on their, on their end as well. So, it's not like they're getting this at a reduced rate, so just my personal perspective makes me think that the value of your investment, it's not necessarily, at least the face value being affected, but again, that's, could be a point that others may have a different opinion on. I'm just sharing my opinion with you.
It's just interesting, because I think that with the people that I've talked to who own liquor licensing here in town, or lease it, we all kind of feel a little bit differently. The more you bring in, the more your value and what you have decreases when it comes to that, if there's more available. And from what I understand, there are seven or eight licenses that are not being used in Bowling Green, but that are out there, which means they're hanging on to it as an investment, not giving it back to the state the way it's intended, so that somebody else can come along who will put that to use and pay their taxes and employ people. I mean, my taxes on liquor, liquor and that sort of, I mean, I'm, it's a lot, and I've employed 25 to 30 people at all times, and my accounting is done here in town. I mean, I try to keep everything very local, and I understand that they have big pockets. They have put a lot of money into their project. Just, it seemed a little backwards when I heard about it, just because I just asked for the same acceptance two years ago and was pretty much shut down. Now, nobody said, not one person said to me, why don't you go to city council and see if you can have one come in? I was just told I would be shut down. So, I guess I never thought of this kind of, you know, they're smarter than me when it comes to that. But, I don't know, saying that it doesn't decrease the value of my liquor license, I don't see how you would see it that way. And I, it's really frustrating that there's so many out there that are just laying there, you know? I don't understand why they're not selling it to the people who want to put it in the pizza place, although I understand that they've already bought a liquor license, that they've already bought it, so they're just waiting for it to come in, but then why didn't they buy one out of Bowling Green?
Well, we were told that they've made an effort to do that.
And then they had to wait, which is what I had to do. And so, I had to wait six months for someone to come to me and say, okay, now we'll sell it to you, because I wanted to make sure I wasn't going to give it right back to the state.
I can't, I can't speak to the specifics of their efforts or their negotiations or any of that, but, you know, I was told that they did make an effort to obtain one that was being held locally.
Yeah, I did too.
And weren't able to do so, and this was their recourse.
So, it would just be more time would be their only obstacle, which is what I had to go through. I was open for six months before I ever poured a beer in my restaurant, because I had to wait. You have to wait for one to come up. So, I don't know, I just, you know, obviously, there's two sides to this, and I'm all about having better businesses in Bowling Green and successful people in Bowling Green and supporting, you know, from what I understand, they're thinking 30 employees, that's a lot of employees to take on. I know, I mean, I'm awake at night thinking of the 25 to 30 families that count on me to make this right, which, again, is another reason why I'm here. I need to make sure that the value of what I've put my time and money into doesn't lessen.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate you coming in, and if you'd like to catch up afterwards, I can help steer you in the right direction, and we can answer your questions better.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hey, that's all. Right. Okay, moving forward on our agenda to our official reports, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Good evening. I was very pleased with that, as I know you were, with that special presentation, that is a special way of touching all of our hearts, and, and for some of us who are, as I've told my family and others, we just got off the boat. So, it's, it's still relatively fresh in my mind. So, it's a, I really appreciate what the Human Relations Commission, what you all did back on April 3rd, and, and adopting that, that special ordinance. Mr. President, members of council and all assembled, this is another significantly important week for the city of Bowling Green. As we prepare for the celebration of the 25th anniversary of the Black Swamp Arts Festival, Lori Treter will be outlining the street closings and related details, including the all-important handicap parking area. Remember last year, unfortunately, some people didn't get the message, even though we made countless efforts to get the word out there about handicap parking, right down here, lots of spaces available, but some people elected even to park over in the police lot, and then they got towed. Not, they weren't happy, but then they understood. But in any event, the important handicap parking area and bus transportation services to the Four Corners. I know we're going to have a, a series of bus routes going, all coming to the Four Corners area, but from the university, from, I believe, the fairgrounds, and from perhaps one other location there, here in town, but Lori will give you the particulars on that. We are also looking forward to the rededication of the City Park Veterans Memorial, set for September 11th at 11:00 a.m. Dave Reidenauer and his committee have worked very hard in the planning of this event, along with our own Brian Kraft and his staff, and thank you, Brian, very much, and I know Joe Fossett has had a lot to do with this as well, and a special thank you to, as I said, to Dave Reidenauer. Another important community event, one that has long been in the planning process, is the unveiling of the draft of the Community Action Plan, and this will take place from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. on September 12th, September 12th, at the Wood County District Public Library. This draft plan has major implications for neighborhood revitalization efforts, and I encourage, I encourage all citizens to attend and share your views. This is a draft form, and it will be in draft form, and Heather, I want to thank you and the committee for all of your good work in that regard. As I discussed with the Human Relations Commission in session last Friday morning, and in keeping as I previously identified with the resolution adopted by city council on April 3rd, there are two important forthcoming community events related to the complexities of the immigration issue worthy of special note. The first event will take place at the Wood County District Public Library on September 14th from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. That's September 14th from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. The program entitled Immigration Misunderstood: Illegal or Undocumentable, and will feature a presentation by attorney Eugenio Mollo Jr., and I believe he represents the ABLE Group. Another event will take place on November 2nd on the topic of welcoming immigrants, and will highlight the work of Global Detroit and special welcoming initiatives there and elsewhere, including the city of Dayton. And thank you Bruce Jeffers very much, and Margaret Monique, and Beatrice Maya that you've heard from earlier, and others for your leadership of roles in this, in this regard. This morning, I participated in an all-important conference call with the Director of the Ohio EPA, Craig Butler, and some of his key staffers and division heads, including the Chief of the Northwest Ohio Division Office in Bowling Green, Shannon Neighbors, who happens to also be a BGSU graduate. Joining with me were Council President Mike Osbacher, Second Ward Council Member, and the most senior member of council in terms of years of service, John Zaffordino, Attorney Megan Newlove, and Chair of the Board of Public Utilities, City Attorney Michael Marsh, Director of Public Utilities, Brian O'Connell, Municipal Administrator Lori Treter, and the Assistant Administrator Joe Fosson. The conference call was held as a follow-up to my continuing interactions with Director Butler and Chief Neighbors. Director Butler will be providing us with a summation of our points of discussion this morning, which I will share with you as soon as it reaches, reaches me. Today's session with the Ohio EPA is in part a follow-up to the issuance of a certificate of public convenience and necessity from the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission on August 25th. The FERC document, interestingly, contained a section related to the concerns and questions about the proposed pipeline project raised by Bowling Green, along with a complex listing of 39, 39 conditional points that must be addressed by NEXUS. In much the same manner as the FERC document, today's session with the Ohio EPA is, in my view, another significant indication that the issues raised by Bowling Green have been heard both in Columbus and in Washington. Today, we heard from the Ohio EPA that their experts have carefully and methodically examined the environmental conditions of this construction, and were reminded of the Ohio's, of the Ohio EPA's commitment to the state waterways and environmental assets. All significant concerns raised by Bowling Green have been or in, or are being addressed, including specific and aggressive plans by both FERC and the Ohio EPA to develop including specific and aggressive plans by both FERC and the Ohio EPA to develop specific, site-specific plans for monitoring the construction of the proposed pipeline. FERC, which has authority for the routing of the pipeline because it is an intrastate project, will have a field staff in Ohio for the project. The Ohio EPA, in conjunction with its scientific and technical staff, as well as with geologists from the Ohio Geological Survey, will carefully monitor the actual construction. Clearly, from Director Butler's perspective, much has been learned as a result of the unfortunate environmental impacts with the Rover project in southeastern Ohio specifically related to the Tuscarawas River Crossing and the monumental finds that have been levied with that project. Project oversight is the key issue, and as the saying goes, getting it right. And, and while I've spoken a more global sense in my reporting here, the, the, all the comments were really directed to the proximity of the proposed pipeline to our, our state-of-the-art water treatment plant. That's first and foremost in our, in all of us. Speaking for all of us, I would have to say that's first and foremost and has been and will continue to be in our minds as we move forward. This concludes my report unless you have questions of me.
Are there questions for the mayor?
A quick comment on the Immigration Task Force. John Zaffardino's been very involved really for many years, and so I'm kind of Johnny come lately with the overall efforts. I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you. That's very kind, Bruce. John, I'm sorry, I should have been.
No problem there. No problem whatsoever. Thank you.
Additional questions for the mayor? Very good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Municipal Administrator, Ms. Treder.
Good evening. Well, as the mayor mentioned, we are coming up on Black Swamp Arts Festival weekend, so always an exciting time in our town. And as usual, our folks have been hard at work, working with the festival committee. The festival committee does have a special event permit to be operating in the downtown and work in conjunction with our law enforcement, our public works and our utilities departments to secure the site and to provide other services to make it a safe environment for all those visiting our town, those that live here, those working and those displaying their art and their talents throughout the town. We do have some closures that will be taking place. We're actually going to be starting up on Thursday. So I'm going to kind of read through here just to make sure we have this on the record here, that beginning Thursday, September 7th at 6:00 a.m., the eastern portion of City Lot 2, which is the lot behind Sambies and Panera, so it's bordered by Prospect Street, that eastern part will be closed and the entire lot will then close 24 hours later on Friday, September 8th. At 3:00 a.m. on Saturday, September 9th, all on-street parking will be prohibited in the following locations: Main Street between Clay and Pearl, Prospect between East, Worcester and Clough, Clay between Main and Grove, and Clough between Main and South Prospect. Any vehicle that is parked in these restricted areas after 3:00 a.m. on Saturday will be towed at the owner's expense. And then an hour later at 4:00 a.m., we are going to close Main Street on Saturday morning. Again, this is September 9th, so Main Street's going to be closed between Clay and Pearl to all vehicular traffic. While Main Street is closed, no through-traffic will be allowed on Oak, Court, Clough and Washington. Worcester Street, as we've done for many years, well, 25, I believe, I'm assuming they 25 followed the same traffic plan, but don't quote me on that, Worcester Street will remain open for east and westbound traffic to get through town. We will be posting detour routes for trucks. Those happen all the way back at Napoleon and up at Poe. As the mayor mentioned, there are shuttles to the event, so although there is some parking in downtown, you may just want to take a shuttle because it'll get you actually to the heart of the festival. You can pick those up at Bowling Green High School, the Wood County Fairgrounds, Meyer and Bowling Green State University. And you'll be dropped right in downtown near the Frontier Communications Building in the Bowling Green Police Division. And Sunday night is when we will reopen the streets. As the mayor mentioned, we offer handicap parking here at City Hall, so this whole back area becomes for handicap parking. And if people have a placard, they just need to pull up and, and we will get you parked here. So thank you, everyone, for your patience. As we always say when we're welcoming a lot of guests in town, please just be a little bit of, you know, have a little bit of extra patience. These are our visitors, these people are coming to our town. We hope that, as you always are, that you'll be welcoming and kind and be glad that they're here. The only other note I have for you this evening is that next Tuesday night, so that's September 12th, of course, we have the CAP meeting over at the library. When you get done over there at 6:30, council members, if you'd like to head over here, you can do a little meet and greet with those people that are participating in our Citizens Academy. And just as a reminder, those are the folks who, from boards and commissions who are newer, that we are giving an introduction about city government, kind of a city government 101. Eventually, they'll be touring different facilities and learning from our various experts. So that completes my report, subject to your questions.
Other questions for Ms. Treder?
That's great. We have handicap parking right back here. There'll be signage then, or is there someone that's going to see placards as folks come in, or is it just going to be over?
Yes, that is a man's station, the Black Swamp Arts Festival volunteers. John, you know them well. You know that, well, that there are a lot of volunteers, so it's hard to keep track of where they all are. But yes, these are some of, of the swamp volunteers that will monitor that. They'll have a barricade up. And I believe that they, the festival lists that on all of their websites so that folks planning to come to town and wondering, okay, where can I go? We do have, in our city parking lots, of course, our city, you know, our regular public parking lots, there are limited numbers of handicap spots, but the, the most definitely are here at the building and of course, get you really quick access to the festival right out from Oak Street.
Sure. Great. Thanks.
Thank you. Planning Director, Ms. Saylor.
Good evening. No report.
Other questions for Heather? Thank you. Parks and Recreation Director, Ms. Ali.
She is absent this evening.
Thank you. City Attorney, Mr. Marsh. Questions for Mr. Marsh?
I have a few questions tonight, Mike, based on the lobby visitation. Of course, been reading and preparing for tonight's discussion and decision, but some new questions were raised by prudence. And prudence referred to hidden licenses. I've seen them referred to as licenses and safekeeping, you know, whatever term, you know, is out there. But when someone has a dormant license, is it known to any bureaucracy or is it just, they just kind of keep it in the closet?
Yeah, it's called safe, it's called safekeeping. And it's in safekeeping because it's what the state, so sure, the state knows.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
The state of Ohio is, is who holds the license. So yes, the state knows.
So then, when a person comes to a town that has no state-issue licenses available, can they contact the state and ask what's in safekeeping? Is that an easy process?
Yeah. And at one time, the state used to be pretty aggressive about if there was a waiting list, requiring people that had a license in safekeeping to take action by a date certain. But I don't know what the recent practice has been. Yeah. I know, I know we have at least five in Bowling Green. There may be more than that. And, you know, I guess you'd have to ask, well, is the state doing anything about it? And, and the reason the state at least used to be aggressive is because the state's not making any money with it. And they get the annual fee, but, but they're not making any sales tax when the license is just sitting there. But I don't know what their practice has been the last few years.
So coming into tonight, I always viewed it as a commodity that a person holds on to and, you know, sells when they want to. I didn't know the state used to have more of a involvement in when that might have got moved along. So it is legal, though, for people to hold them?
Yeah.
For an indefinite period?
Honestly, they pay the annual fee. Well, it belongs to the state, so the state can come up with any rules they want. Like I said, my understanding in the past was that the state wouldn't allow licenses to sit in safekeeping indefinitely when there was a waiting list. And there is a waiting list in our town. So I, I, but I, I don't claim to be an expert on this, so I don't know what the recent practice has been.
Sure. Thanks, Mike.
Maybe the ones that are in safekeeping now haven't been there very long. I, I don't really know. And some of them may not be on-site consumption licenses. There are lots of variations of licenses.
Sure.
So for example, for all I know, those could be carryout licenses. I, I don't know.
Of course. Yeah, sure. Yeah. The comment that our visitor tonight was shut down, that, or would be shut down, that really surprised me. Does that make sense to you?
I don't know what that means, to tell you the truth. I, I heard her say that too. I don't know what that means.
Because they are available to buy when people can buy them. And when people buy them, it's a legal thing.
Yeah, and the state, the state operates that function, not the city. So I'm, I'm not clear what Prue meant by that. But, yeah.
Thank you.
Obviously, you can't sell illegally, so I, I guess maybe that's what the implication was. I don't know.
Can I clarify? Am I allowed right now?
Not right now. Thanks. Thanks a lot.
Utilities Director, Mr. O'Connell.
No report.
Questions for Brian? Thank you. Public Works Director, Mr. Kraft.
No report. Some questions may?
Questions for Mr. Kraft? Thank you.
A quick comment, Mr. Kraft, I, you put the sidewalk in along Fairview there, and we had discussed it, how to handle that tricky little hill and corner. And I didn't think it was going to be too hot when we were talking about it, but I really like that now. And just the whole project, you did a great job with it. Turned out real nice.
Just thank you for what happened. It turned out well for everybody. I see people riding bikes and strollers and rollerblades, everything, skateboards. They all seem to be using the sidewalk and the crosswalk, so appreciate it.
I have one little question. Brian, we, we're a little lonely for construction to take place again in Bowling Green. We've been a while without construction on streets. I was just wondering when the repaving for Grove was going to start?
Well, that has been, had a bid opening. And we're, I believe, we're in the matter of changing books for contract signing.
So soon?
Soon. And still trying to get done yet, this construction.
And of course, I'm being facetious about wanting construction to start again in Bowling Green. I'm rather enjoying these days.
I thought for a while that we were making people a little crazy with the work everywhere.
Yeah, you, you did. That's why I said what I did. You made me crazy. But, but it's nice. Your work is very nice.
That area includes North Grove and West Evers and South Church. So, yeah, it's still in our plans to do yet this fall.
It'll sure be nice when that's done too. Thank you. Good job.
Thank you. That completes our official reports. We move on to the introduction of new legislation. I have several pieces of legislation from the Finance Committee, a resolution transferring previously unappropriated funds, an ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio during the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2017, and ending December 31st, 2017. An ordinance amending and adopting Section 33.23A and C of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding medical and dental insurance. And an ordinance establishing a video service provider fee to be paid by any video service provider offering video service in the city and authorizing the municipal administrator to give notice to the video service provider of the video service provider fee. And I also have several pieces of legislation from the Board of Public Utilities, an ordinance accepting a utility easement from CTE Limited, Principal Business Enterprises, an ordinance authorizing the utilities director to enter into a contract or contracts with Paul Corporation for the purchase of microfiltration modules without advertising and to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts for the installation of the microfiltration modules at the water treatment plant. And finally, an ordinance accepting a deed and an easement from WMOG Investment Corp. and dedicating the property described therein for right-of-way utility and municipal purposes and declaring an emergency.
From the Community Improvement Committee, I have a resolution amending and adopting changes to the procurement manual for the Housing Revolving Loan Fund and Community Development Block Grant Fund.
From the Transportation and Safety Committee, we have two ordinances. First ordinance is an ordinance dedicating certain property in Woodbridge Business Park for right-of-way purposes and declaring an emergency. And we have an ordinance authorizing the sale or disposal of miscellaneous transit service vehicles by the municipal administrator as no longer necessary for municipal purpose.
Thank you. Do we have any council committee reports this evening?
Yes, Mr. President. Kristin Ottley is not available to be here tonight because she's away seeking her second year of training in being a park director. So she's unable to be here, but did ask me to make a few points as a follow-up to the open house that revealed the concept plan for a new building in City Park. That concept plan is, the purpose is to replace two aging buildings for which it was determined the remodeling of that, those two buildings is far too expensive and would almost equal the amount of tearing down the two buildings and replacing it with one large building, changing the footprint of the present Veterans Building where it's located today. The Veterans Building is one that would be totally replaced. Kristin wanted me to remind people that comments are being collected, that the community center is the home of where these concept sketches are being placed for the community members to see, and we certainly welcome your comments. They will be collected and shared with the board, the Park and Recreation Board for consideration. The financing is certainly not a new tax. The financing will be borrowed money that will be procured possibly early next year in the form of a bond with low interest. But I wanted to reemphasize the one thing that really concerned Kristin the most, and that's just to let everyone know, what we saw was this beautiful building, absolutely fantastic building, that is only a concept, that is not a final draft. It has not had enough comment yet from the general public, which we are soliciting. It's far too soon for the city council to take any action on this. After the comments are collected, they will be put together and presented to the Parks and Recreation Board for them to start considering. So as much as we would like to have that beautiful building there, it is expensive and we do have to, have to do our due diligence and, and make sure we need every inch of space that we're putting in there and that we're not spending money on something we don't need. And the costs will probably be cut before it's all over. So that's my message from.
Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you. Question. Lori, I should have caught you while you were up here, but one of our items for first reading involves video service providers. And so this is something in response to the loss of the cable franchise fee, or this is kind of a new program, and I understood you didn't really know what kind of money would be involved that we might collect. And am I right, though, that this is somehow a response to the cable franchise fee elimination?
Well, actually, this has been a state law since 2007. So it's been, you know, being used all over the state for, for years. However, Bowling Green had an existing franchise agreement. And you, and in your franchise agreement, yes, you negotiated the franchise fee that we've been collecting all these years since it was eliminated back in 2007, but we also had other components negotiated into that franchise agreement. So when the law changed, you were allowed to continue under your franchise agreement. So, when the law changed, you were allowed to continue under your franchise agreement, which, of course, was more advantageous to the city. So, we just continued our franchise agreement, which had been signed through, you know, summer of 2017. Which, let me tell you, back in 2007, that seemed like a really long ways away. So, when Brian kept projecting and saying the franchise fee is going away, we were like, oh, my goodness. You know, that's so far away. But here we are in 2017. And we could not take any action because if you had passed the video provider fee, it would have made your franchise agreement null and void. So, it superseded anything. So, no, we don't really know how this works right now. As we mentioned in the letter, there are no approved companies that have that. That all goes through the state. The Ohio Department of Commerce is the one that regulates all of this. And that was part of why these laws were made, is that every town had a different thing going on. I think it was kind of the evolution of cable TV. It was very local in its early years. And so, each town was doing things. And finally, the federal government stepped in, you know, made changes way back, you know, in the 2000 era. The State of Ohio then said, okay, we need regulations on these companies, but they need to be uniform. And so, that's when the State Commerce Department took over that responsibility. And one of the things that they offer is this video provider fee. So, we would like to be set up that should anybody get approval and the facets of who gets approved and what all that means, I apologize, I just simply don't know. I'm honestly relying on my coworkers at the State of Ohio, you know, to help us through that process. But they did say, one of the things now that we've had this expiration, should we want to impose this fee, that we do need to have legislation to authorize that action.
Thanks.
Mr. President, I'm going to echo Bruce with a kind of a question, kind of a statement to follow up on the mayor's report, actually. You know, it occurs to me with the presentation that we had earlier that we would be remiss not to acknowledge the impact that the president's expiration date that he's put on the DACA program, Deferred Action for Childhood Arrivals, is going to affect Bowling Green. We have students at the university, I don't have any hard numbers, but the number's greater than zero, who stand to have, stand to be torn away from the only life they've ever known from their families. And I think we'd be failing to do right by our constituents if we don't acknowledge that. Now, the public rationale for this is that he's putting this in the hands of Congress to fix. But as we know, Congress has not acted in 16 years to reform our immigration system. So, I think it would be a good idea for us to consider drafting and signing a joint letter, us on City Council, the mayor, if we want, not in our town, the Human Relations Commission, everybody else included, to push Representative Latta and Senators Brown and Portman to take action at the federal level so that that expiration date is only temporary. I think that is something that we would do well to do. And maybe Bruce and John, since you have the leadership roles in this area with the committee, maybe this is something that you can look at drafting if you're so inclined. But, yeah, I felt that it would be a mistake not to have some discussion about this, given the day so far.
Have you had a chance to talk to anybody from the university about this? I know it's all happening fast.
Yeah, it's happening very fast. Like I said, I don't have hard numbers. I know
Fewer than 20, I believe.
Okay.
But they do have all the, you know, the person's identity.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's, you know, so to some people, you know, that might just seem like 20 people. But to me, one alone is a tragedy. So, you know, the expiration date that's been put on DACA has been condemned, not just by Democrats, but by Republicans as well. This should not be a partisan issue. This is something that we all should be able to rally around behind to protect all members of our Bowling Green family. So, yeah, I'm hoping this is something that we can look at.
Yeah, thanks for the comments, Daniel. Let's discuss that further.
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you. Are there additional committee reports? Seeing none, we'll move on to the reading of legislation.
Legislation for first reading, Resolution Number 3678 for first reading, resolution transferring previously appropriated funds.
I move to suspend the rules and give Resolution 3678 its second and third readings.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Seeliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
The motion passes. The rules are suspended for Resolution 3678.
Resolution Number 3678 for second and third reading, resolution transferring previously appropriated funds.
I move to adopt Resolution 3678.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Jeffers?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Seeliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
The motion passes. Resolution 3678 is adopted.
Resolution Number 3679 for first reading, resolution amending and adopting changes to the procurement manual for the Housing Revolving Loan Fund and Community Development Block Grant Fund. Ordinance Number 8621 for first reading, ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2017, and ending December 31, 2017.
I move to suspend the rules and give Ordinance 8621 its second and third readings.
Tag it.
It's moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Roland?
Yes.
Seeliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
The motion passes. The rules are suspended for Ordinance 8621.
Ordinance Number 8622 for first reading, ordinance amending and adopting Section 33.23A and C of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio, regarding medical and dental insurance. Ordinance Number 862
Excuse me, Kay.
I'm sorry.
I think we moved past the second and third readings for Ordinance 8621.
Did I forget?
Yeah.
Got ahead of myself.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Okay. So, move back to Ordinance Number 8621 for second and third reading.
Thank you.
Ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio, during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2017, and ending December 31, 2017.
I move to adopt Ordinance 8621.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Seeliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
The motion passes. Ordinance 8621 is adopted.
Did I read that? Ordinance Number 8623 for first reading, ordinance establishing a video service provider fee to be paid by any video service provider offering video service in the city and authorizing the municipal administrator to give notice to the video service provider of the video service provider fee. Ordinance Number 8624 for first reading, ordinance accepting a utility easement from CTE Limited, Principal Business Enterprises. Ordinance Number 8625 for first reading, ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to enter into a contract or contracts with Paul Corporation for the purchase of microfiltration modules without advertising and to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts for the installation of the microfiltration modules at the water treatment plant. Ordinance Number 8626 for first reading, ordinance accepting a deed and an easement from WMOG Investment Incorporated and dedicating the property described therein for right-of-way utility and municipal purposes and declaring an emergency.
I move to suspend the rules and give Ordinance 8626 its second and third readings.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Seeliger?
Yes.
The motion passes. The rules are suspended for Ordinance 8626.
Ordinance Number 8626 for second and third reading, ordinance accepting a deed and an easement from WMOG Investment Incorporated and dedicating the property described therein for right-of-way utility and municipal purposes and declaring an emergency.
I move to adopt the emergency clause for Ordinance 8626.
Tag it.
It's moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Seeliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
The motion passes. The emergency clause is adopted for Ordinance 8626. I now move to adopt Ordinance 8626.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Seeliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
The motion passes. Ordinance 8626 is adopted.
Ordinance Number 8627 for first reading, ordinance dedicating certain property in Woodbridge Business Park for right-of-way purposes and declaring an emergency.
I move to suspend the rules and give Ordinance 8627 its second and third reading.
Second.
Second.
The motion passes. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Jeffers?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Seeliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
The motion passes. The rules are suspended for Ordinance 8627.
Ordinance Number 8627 for second and third reading, ordinance dedicating certain property in Woodbridge Business Park for right-of-way purposes and declaring an emergency.
I move to adopt the emergency clause for Ordinance 8627.
Tag it.
It's been moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Roland?
Yes.
Seeliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
The motion passes. The emergency clause is adopted for Ordinance 8627.
I'll take it from here, Mike. I'm refocused. I move to adopt Ordinance 8627.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? I would just note that the reason for the expedited processing on this and the previous ordinance are, these are items related to the Woodbridge Business Park. And we're just trying to clear the road for that project to get moving out there. Kay, please call the roll.
Seeliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
The motion passes. Ordinance 8627 is adopted.
Ordinance Number 8628 for first reading, ordinance authorizing the sale or disposal of miscellaneous transit service vehicles by the municipal administrator as no longer necessary for municipal purposes. There is no legislation for second reading, so move on to legislation for third reading. Resolution Number 3674 for third reading, resolution authorizing municipal administrator to participate in the Ohio Department of Transportation Cooperative Purchasing Program for the purpose of purchasing vehicles, machinery, materials, supplies, or other articles.
I move to approve Resolution 3674.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Seeliger?
Yes.
The motion passes. Resolution 3674 is adopted.
Resolution Number 3676 for third reading, resolution for City Council not opposing the transfer of a Class D-5 liquor permit to Wiley Ventures, II LLC.
Mr. President?
Mr. Jeffers.
I move to adopt Resolution 3676.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Just to be real clear on how we're voting on this, if we vote yes on this, we are voting to allow this TREC's transfer to go forward.
Correct.
That's correct. Okay. All right, since I'm already talking, I'll just continue a little bit. So, Prudy is here and gave some perspective of her experience. And Prudy spoke very plainly, and I appreciate that. As John brought up, I'm disturbed that somebody would have told you that you would be shut down or whatever that conversation was. I hope they were not talking about TREC's, the TREC's means of getting a license because that would not sound at all correct, that you would have been told that. I'm not quite clear on when TREC's licenses became available, but that's probably neither here nor there at this point. So, for me, the thing that I'm most focused on here is the location of this new establishment. It's on the south end of town. It's not the same as if we were opening up another bar downtown as far as the effects on people. And some of the main people involved are the men and women that worked for Chief Hetrick back there. And I know that the chief is very concerned that we have a reasonable number and a reasonable arrangement of alcohol-selling establishments. And so, I know that he has concerns about this. As far as some of the discussion about what's a competitive advantage for one party over the other, I've had kind of a loss to say what's fair and what's not fair. I understand your position, that you paid a hell of a lot of money for this thing. And I don't really know what the rapid-fire people will be paying for their license. They pay the state fee, and then they have to pay the holder of this license X number of dollars. I don't know what that is. So, I'm not really sure what the competitive advantage is, one way or the other. I don't really like that people can hold their local licenses in safekeeping for a real long time. And I know that's the route you had to go, and you probably got good legal advice. I can't counter that advice. But to be honest, I think I'm probably going to favor going ahead with this business and not trying to oppose them for those reasons.
Thank you, Bruce. Are there additional discussions?
Mr. President, this is one of the more difficult decisions that we've had to make in council. There's several that have been really, really tough. But we're talking about the future of Bowling Green right now. I know that anybody who speaks against changing the way you can allow licensing in Bowling Green could perhaps be accused of being anti-business and not wanting new business. I am not that way. I know we're getting Rapid Fire Pizza. Rapid Fire Pizza is about to open. It is going to open in Bowling Green very soon, and I will be one who will be eating the pizza. What concerns me is our city's policy. Here to fore, we've had a policy that we have followed. And the policy was primarily enforced by our police department, a police department that I have the utmost respect. So, when this came up, I really didn't know which way to go. And I talked with Tony, Police Officer Tony Hetrick, Captain, or Chief Hetrick, I should say, and asked for his opinion. And Tony, could I just ask if you've changed your opinion since you wrote back to me? Okay. Chief Hetrick is opposed to this, based on it being bad policy to allow other licenses from other communities to enter into our town. I also want to give Prudy a chance to answer. Some people think that someone from City Council told you you might be shut down. I want to give you a chance to get to that.
I should have been more careful about my wording on that. I realize at this point, you know, there are so many different people that I talk to when going into business, both about health department, liquor licensing, parking, which, you know, I had to jump through a lot of hoops in a lot of different areas. This was not City Council that told me they would shut me down. It was one individual who said, if you go forward with this, I will make sure that I shut you down, meaning the idea of bringing in, not shut down my restaurant, shut down the idea of bringing in another license from another county because it was already upsetting when it had been done recently to the place whose name I still can't remember that was out by Kroger. There's now Bahios. So, just basically, I will shut down any chance that you would have of bringing in another license from another county, not shut down my restaurant. So, thanks for giving me that opportunity because I don't want people to think that it was brutal like that. It wasn't. It was just, there's no way.
So, in summary, I did turn to our law enforcement department for advice, and I am going to follow the advice of Chief Hetrick. I am going to be eating at the new pizza place. And I have all the confidence in the world that with the city's help or, you know, if you talk to Prudy on how she got her license, she may very well be the one that leads you to procuring a local license. world that with the city's help or, you know, if you talk to Prudy on how she got her license, she may very well be the one that leads you to procuring a local license that is available so that we don't have to change our policy to allow an outside license in. And I will be there to have a beer the first night you get the license and start serving, I promise you. So I have to oppose, I'm opposing this. I want to make sure I'm saying this right, because the way the resolution reads is that the city council not opposing the transfer. So I have to make sure I'm making this clear. So I will not be voting in support of it.
Thank you.
Laurie? Oh. Go ahead. I was just gonna say, you know, I'm not really sure who to ask this of, but, you know, is there anybody city staff-wise that can comment on this question of possible devaluation of a license?
I apologize. We were looking at, we just don't know.
Yeah, I wouldn't necessarily expect you to. Is that, is that something that our economic development people might be able to answer?
I think it's speculation, too. I, you know, I don't think my, unfortunately, I just think, we just don't know.
Yeah.
I wish we could give you some solid advice.
I think that's just, the issue for me personally is, I sort of don't feel comfortable voting on this until I have that question answered, because.
Coming in today, I didn't, I didn't really feel like, you know, this was necessarily that big a deal, but listening to Prudence and her concerns as a business owner, I don't want to see her investment be devalued either. So I feel very conflicted about this at the moment, and I don't want to draw this out, but I'm not sure that I'm comfortable voting on this tonight for that reason.
I've been conflicted about this even before the comments tonight, and I think it's complicated. I understand the chief's position. I understand the benefits, though, for that part of town and the economic development, per se, of creating jobs. You know, so I came in tonight after much debate and forgetting how to do my job earlier when Mike started doing my part. Been very preoccupied with this. But at this point, I am leaning toward voting for the resolution. Sounds like you're contemplating tabling it, though, Daniel, you know, so that's.
Yeah, I would support that.
The question before us, perhaps. But for what's before us right now, after kind of a torturous contemplation, I came in supporting this tonight.
This is, I'm frustrated with the state. I think we have some flawed licensing policies that are putting a lot of people in bad situations. Prudy herself said, if she could have, she had gotten different advice, she would have taken one of these from outside, and she would have had a wonderful restaurant and had her beer in there six months earlier, if she, she could have. We don't want to have too many in here, but we have five, at least between five and eight licenses that we're allowed to have that we're not using. And it, and that's nothing, that's not our policy. That's, that's state, and I think that's very frustrating. Whereas I have all respect for our police chief and his concerns that way, especially when you're in a small community with 20,000 students. I think, I think this is a, a good thing. It's, it's a, a new business. It seems like there's people that are very committed, and, and I keep going back to, there's five that aren't even being used now. Having said that, does that open the floodgates for people to get them all over? Well, they gotta go through us still and, and talk. And right now, I feel like this is good for our community, and I'm gonna prob, I'm definitely gonna vote yes on this.
Thanks, Scott. Obviously, a lot of compelling arguments and some compelling comments from council members. All of them have merit in their own way. I've thought the thing through, I think, pretty considerably, and when I get down to it, I think that where I'm looking at this thing right now is an economic development issue. I think that we have, in this matter, we have a choice that we can make, and I think that we should, first of all, remember that we hear pretty consistently from our constituents that they're eager for us to enable other restaurants. We hear that, you know, there's this conspiracy that city council wants to keep chain restaurants out of Bowling Green. We've heard this for years. It's not true, by the way, folks. But this gives us an opportunity to, you know, answer at this time that to a certain degree. And I think that the choice that we can make in this matter is if we're gonna be known as a community that's going to support startup new businesses, you know, in our community, if we're going to work with them to enable them to be successful in our community, or if we're going to maybe not be as supportive as we could be. And I think it's also worth remembering that this transfer, even though it's a bit unorthodox, it is a legal means of bringing a liquor license into our community.